Stand for the flag of your agents.
The flag of your agents to unify the United States of America because we are the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all right, thank you. We're going to start with the county. Am I on?
You're on, but it's Tom's turn.
I know.
Yeah.
Thank you, Erica. Yes, I'm going to open the meeting for the county commissioners August 20th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Dawn Hill and Brooke Moore are remote tonight, so all votes will be taken by roll call. Announcements are that the county commission meeting is being audio and video recorded. And next up is public comment for items not on the agenda for county. We will also be holding public comment under select board. Ms. Perry.
Hey there, Megan Perry.
Guys, wait, hold on a second. Where's Malcolm?
He's not here.
So we don't have a quorum present.
You don't, you don't need a physical quorum present.
Okay.
Right now still, so.
Just make sure. Okay.
You're good.
Okay, thank you.
I'll talk under county, yes. Are we good? Okay, it's Megan Perry. I just wanted to quickly give a very quick demonstration of how a contaminant moves through water, because I know we have a lot of concerns about PFAS in our sole source aquifer. So just pardon my fumbling around a little bit to get it set up, but here's some food dye and some water. I'm going to count this as the contaminant. This is just your basic siphon. I'm going to consider this a well. So you can see the contaminant in here. I hope you can all see it. Sorry, Matt. As the well pumps, it starts to slowly move. If we add more wells, it's going to go faster and faster and faster. So if I add more siphons to this, it's going to move along faster. My concern is that we do have a sole source aquifer, so I understand we're putting more wells in to try to get deeper, but we don't actually, I don't believe we have mapped the aquifer to determine if there is a true impermeable surface in there or not. And as you can see, the contaminant is moving towards the well. And if we have mapped it, or if we haven't mapped it, we don't, we don't know that that's there. We're just presuming. My next question would be if the lower aquifer is, does, is, has the impermeable surface, how does it recharge? Where does it get more water from? Right? So if we have the impermeable surface, it can't recharge. And then when we do pull out of there, what replaces that water that we pull out of there? I would presume it would be saltwater intrusion. So then we're replacing the water we're taking with saltwater and further contaminating it. So just a very simple example of how a contaminant moves through water. The more wells we pump into there, the quicker it moves, the more we move the contaminant. I just, I think we need to, to think about this before considering the answer to our PFAS problem being putting more wells in and that being the, the solution to our problem. So, thank you guys very much. I will try my very best to remove this without disturbing the meeting as best I can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bonet, I'm assuming you're here for select board public comment? Okay, yeah, we're in county commissioners. Okay. Thank you. There's no new business. Next up is approval of minutes and warrants. Entertainer motion to approve minutes, payroll, and treasury warrants.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Noted that Dr. McNabb has joined the meeting and.
Second.
Moved by Malcolm, second by Matt. All those in favor? By roll call, Malcolm.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Dawn.
Aye.
Brooke.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That passed unanimously. Next up, official business, discussion regarding Senate Bill 2395, proposed term limits for Steamship Authority Governing Board. Tonight we have here our Steamship representative. That was just the time, the timer ending from before. Our Steamship representative, Rob Rannie, here, and he has a prepared statement he's going to read. Rob?
Thank you, Chair Dixon and the Commissioners. Rob Rannie, I'm your Steamship rep, and I've got a couple of things to say about term limits, although I will say at the outset and again a little bit later that this is not about me. It's not about, you know, a personal thing. It's really about what's best for Nantucket and how we, how, how the representation is appointed to the Steamship Board. As outlined in the SSA's Enabling Act legislation, the appointment for Nantucket's SSA Board member is on a three-year cycle, with the only limitation right now being that the individual has to be an island resident, which means that currently the county commissioners can appoint whomever they wish on a three-year rotation. Mandated term limits will take away a measure of control from the county commissioners, who as a result may potentially face an unfavorable and forced decision at some point in the future. This is not about me. This is about what is best for Nantucket as, and its lifeline to the mainland and how Nantucket is represented. But it is also about trusting the fully elected county commissioners to make the right choice as they see fit. The decision on who to appoint to represent Nantucket on the Steamship Board, for all things Steamship Authority related, should be left fully up to the county commissioners, who are Nantucket's appointing authority for this position. It takes time to learn the role of an SSA Board member and to build meaningful diplomatic relationships with the other board members, other port communities, our local legislative delegation, other stakeholders, SSA staff, SSA senior management, and so on. Chairmanship on the SSA Board rotates between the port communities on a predetermined schedule. It is possible that a brand-new board member, who is appointed after a term-limited board member's term expires, could immediately be placed in the chairmanship role in their first year. This may or may not work out well for Nantucket. The term limits issue, which was first brought up in 2022 and then died a quiet death at the State House, seems to have resurfaced again after a few years at the urging of a recently formed Citizen Action Group from Martha's Vineyard, in an apparent effort to push a vineyard-centric agenda. In a July 29th, 2025 article in the Vineyard Gazette, Edgertown Select Board Member Arts Madbeck said, "I really don't like the state kind of reaching down and telling us you can only have three terms." He said he's concerned that if the bill passed, a situation could arise where the best person for the job wouldn't be eligible, putting the island in a tough spot. Beth O'Connor, a member of the Citizen Action Group, said in response that the island is already in a tough spot because longstanding members of the SSA Board representing other municipalities are voting against the vineyard's best interest. Ms. O'Connor went on to say that if the Steamship Authority Board could have a more fluid approach as opposed to some of these people that have been there for a very long time, I think we as vineyardsers would be able to benefit by having people that perhaps would be more open to working together. As one of these, quote, "people that have been there for a long time," I take some issue with Ms. O'Connor's comments, and I would suggest that, in fact, the opposite is true. It is precisely the longer-serving board members that actually do work very well together, helping to onboard and acclimate new members and promoting stability on the board. If it were a contentious board, not much would get accomplished and no community would benefit. I have always said that being an SSA Board member is not simply about pushing our own community's interests or agenda, but it's equally about supporting what is in the best interest of the SSA as a whole. Sometimes what might benefit the vineyard most, or Nantucket, or any of the other port communities, is not always what is best for the SSA as a, as a transportation system. As we all know, Nantucket faces issues that perhaps some other communities do not regarding filling volunteer board and committee seats. Why would we want to limit future appointment decisions now? Stability on the SSA Board is vital to us all. Thank you. And if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Rob. Commissioners, is there any comments on this proposed legislation from, from us? I think the idea was that Rob and Nat, our Port Council rep, were asking a let, for a letter from the county commissioners to go up to Senator Seer and Rep Mowgli as, in opposition to this bill. So throw it open to, oh, I see, I'm just going to go in the order of the screen. Brooke and then Dawn.
Yeah, hi. I completely agree with Rob that the, the potential negatives of this for Nantucket far outweigh any potential positives. I'm not sure of the motivations, but I can tell you from personal experience that a group from the Vineyard reached out to me while I was Chair of the Select Board and asked to have closer collaboration. And I said, "Sure, I'm willing to talk to you. What issues are on your mind?" They were here for a Steamship Authority meeting, and I've never heard anything from them since. So I'm not sure that the idea that turnover on the board would foster more collaboration. I just, I don't know what's going on here, and I don't think that there's any purpose, and I would support writing a letter in opposition to this legislation.
Thanks, Brooke. Dawn?
Um, I, I completely agree. I think that we should write a letter in opposition, and if, if it were to pass, then I think we should also consider asking for an exemption for Nantucket. Thank you.
I agree with everything you said.
Yeah, I, I'll speak. I support the letter, but I do think there are some issues that are, you know, just seem to just keep coming up with the Steamship. And I, I look at it, when I have a complaint at my business, I don't get mad at the person that complained or I don't, you know, I, I ask my employees to, you know, I'll give someone a gift certificate, I'll thank them and I'll, so I can improve and do better. And I'd like to, you know, I hope that, you know, what is it that the Steamship needs to do? And, you know, Rob knows this, but what, you know, how do you take what you're doing and turn it positive? How do we take some of the things that seem to not go away and, and find a way to solve them? And so that's what I hope, you know, I support the letter, but I hope keeping people in place finds a way to break through some of these, because we've been dealing with them for 15, 25 years. And, and I think that there is some, you know, usually if there's a complaint, there's some, one person complains, 15 others couldn't be bothered to. So there is something to address, and I think there are some issues that clearly need to be addressed. And I think, you know, but for us, I think that Rob and Nat are the guys right now to address them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, I, I agree with my colleagues. I, I think that as far, as long as I've been on the board and the applicants have come in, there hasn't been a contested role for this seat. And I think, I think it is a big position, and it is a lot of work. And I think that if anybody else wanted to step up and start creating some kind of, like, loose succession plan, that maybe in the future someday, that, that, that could be a thing. But I'm not sure term limits is, is the answer and may be very heavy-handed in that way. So I, I agree with my colleagues. Would there be, Erica, I'm assuming we should do a motion to, to send a letter?
Yes.
Great. Would there be a motion to send a letter in opposition to Senate Bill 2395?
And maybe just note that the Chair can finalize it and, and sign it.
Sure. With that amendment. Malcolm, second, good?
That's second.
Moved by Malcolm, second by Matt. By roll call, Malcolm?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye, and I would like to just make a note that I think that Rob and Nat should work on encouraging someone, to get someone trained up for succession planning.
Thank you.
But that's an aye. Yeah.
And aye. Dawn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That passed unanimously. So I'll work on, we can work on that. And Commissioners' reports, comments. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn county?
So move?
Second.
Moved by Matt, second by Malcolm. By roll call, Malcolm?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Matt?
All right, I am opening the Select Board. All right. The first are the announcements. Is there anyone that's, are you going to do those? Libby, okay, Libby?
Yep, got it. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
So, um, this meeting is being video and audio recorded. We continue to have mandatory outdoor water use restrictions in effect due to a Level 1 drought condition. The restrictions are mandatory to limit lawn irrigation to two designated days per week based on street address. No irrigation allowed Friday through Sunday. Updates are on the town website. We are continuing weekly pond monitoring for harmful algal blooms in partnership with the Nantucket Land Council, Nantucket Conservation Foundation, Nantucket Land Bank, Windill Loring Nature Foundation, UMass Boston, Mass Audubon, all together are conducting this weekly monitoring. And if you need to report a hab, a harmful algal bloom, there is a place to do that on the town website. Free tours are still occurring for a little bit longer at the Brant Point Shellfish Hatchery. These run on Tuesdays at 11:00, and you sign up two weeks in advance. Again, you do that on the town website. The Take It or Leave It facility is accepting latex paint for recycling every Wednesday and Sunday. And the Universal Waste Shed, which is next to the Take It or Leave It, accepts batteries on Tuesdays, Saturdays, 8 to noon. Info on the town website. There will be no Select Board meetings next Wednesday, August 27th, or the following Wednesday, September 3rd. The next board meeting will be Wednesday, September 10th. Town offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st, in observance of Labor Day. And is Kristy there?
No.
I thought she might have an announcement about something, but I, I don't think she did, but maybe I'll just try to make it for her. There is a hearing on, I believe she told me earlier today on September 9th, on the real estate transfer fee that's pending at this legislature, and she is going to be preparing some testimony for the Chair to sign. And we would encourage people to provide written testimony and support as well if they are so inclined.
Great, thank you. All right. I am going to do, we have one question from 86.
Did you say if there was any Select Board comments?
Oh, that's after this, right?
It's before that.
All right. Do we have any Select Board announcements or comments?
Mr. Chair, I need a clarification. I need to ask the board something that relates to the African American House Working Group, and the contract is on the agenda. Would you like me to talk about it then or at the end of the committee reports?
Uh, why don't you?
Or I can do it now.
Where do you, where do you want to, where would you like to talk? Well, you want to do it in, when we, it's on the agenda?
Let's do, on the agenda where the, okay.
Let's do it when we.
The contract's on, that's a better place.
Yeah, let's do it when we hit contracts. Does anyone else, anyone online? Any comments? Okay. I, I just have one, and I've, I've made this three times this summer. I'm going to make it for the fourth time, and I know that we are planning to look at that this, this winter. But I, the, I had one employee that was having both sides of her jaw fixed at the hospital yesterday from an accident on a scooter. I was at a dinner party this weekend, and there was another foreign employee, I heard this secondhand, at the, foreign employee from another business at the hospital who had fallen off a scooter and had, has basically permanent head injuries from it. And the doctor was saying that she would, telling her brother who's holding her hand, "She will never be the same." And so I, this is, in my mind, we are at a serious issue that we need to seriously consider banning scooters and, you know, and for, making sure kids are wearing helmets, et cetera. You know, like I've said, I've had three serious injuries, you know, 25, $50,000 operations with three foreign children, three foreign kids from my business, plus all the other things that have happened. My son witnessed an electric bike accident, was shaken. He didn't even tell me. Tom told me tonight. And so this is an epidemic here that we, as a community, need to address. We are doing our best to bring people to this island, you know, to work for us and to view this island and to visit this island, but we have to make sure that it is safe for them when they get here. So I hope that that's, you know, I'm just pleading that that is something we begin to, I know we take it seriously, but I hope we find a way to address some of it. Okay? So that's, that's, that's that. All right, the next is, oh, where are we? Public comment? That public comment, oh, I've got Select Board public comment. All right, I'm going to read the, read it from last week. Meg really asked us, and she, she asked, "I'm not able to find any documentation of any type of public hearing for two fairgrounds road when it becomes a municipal, municipal lot. It just seemed to morph into a parking lot for big trucks, and a few years later, a shed was added to make it a park and ride. If there was a public hearing, can you share the dates?" The town responds, "April 28th, 2021 minutes announcing it," and there's a, and you can find this online, there's a link, "May 5th minutes for parking regulation changes," and that is May 5th, 2021. And then the Select Board requested NRTA to present options for a seasonal commuter shuttle service between two fairgrounds in town lot at the January 22nd, 2020 Select Board meeting. Improvements to parking lot at two fairgrounds began on 10/3/2020 to serve as a commuter lot and provide a safe pathway to NRTA stop at Amelia Drive, Old South Road. Also, and the paid parking and wait-drive parking pass proposals being discussed by the Select Board, does the town of Nantucket plan to have a public hearing regarding these initiatives?" That was another question from Meg. The town responds, "It was a public hearing on January 22nd, 2025, in which the Select Board approved amendments to the parking regulations to allow for residential parking permits on wait-drive," and there's a link for that. And then another question, "What is the timeline for the paid parking and the wait-drive parking pass implementation?" Town responds, "There is currently no established timeline for implementing what was authorized by the parking regulation amendments, while staff continues to research how best to do so." And then another question, "Can and will the Select Board host a moratorium on waivers and variances issued by zoning and planning boards with regards to parking, i.e. the number of parking spots required and the size of parking spots in this neighborhood for all businesses and affordable housing developments who are under review within one mile of this area until a comprehensive parking plan can be approved and implemented?" The town responds, "A moratorium on special permits or variance requests for waivers from a zoning bylaw requirement is legally invalid. In the commercial neighborhood zoning district, a motor vehicle parking lot is in allowed use." Okay? And there were no other public questions? Okay. And then seeing no new business? All right, seeing none. Approval of minutes? A public comment? Oh. All right, public comment, three minutes. Who's up? Yep, come to the mic, please, and give us your name.
Hi, my name is Jen Barrett. I live at 25 York Street, and I'm in a butter to the museum properties for the African Meeting House. And so I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I've been there for over 20 years, and I spend a lot of time in my yard. I see a lot of people walking up and down the street. And that car that belongs to Jim, I just met him last week, has been sitting there for so long. And I, and I want to acknowledge that it was terrible what happened to the African Meeting House. I saw it. It was just horrendous. I can't believe it hasn't been resolved. But when I ran into Jim last week, he said that, you know, he's not moving the truck until he has some resolution. To me, it's an abandoned car. It's not favorable to Nantucket. It doesn't represent Nantucket, in my opinion. When people walk by, I'm in my yard, I mean, families, children, they say, "What's with the truck?" You know, they want to know. They want me to tell them the story. I don't really want to share that story. It's not something that we really, I think, want to advertise. And I'm just thinking, I know we don't want to forget what happened. It's not resolved, but maybe there's a better way to do that than have that truck sitting on the street. You know, maybe it can be commemorated somehow on the African Meeting House. And, you know, I, I don't live here full-time, so I don't want to get into the other part of it. But I do think that having that car, it's truly abandoned. I know there might be a game, he moves it afoot, this and that. It's got trash in it, it's got signs in the back. Now it's got pictures on the side that, that are of the African Meeting House with all that wording and the terrible signs, and, you know, children walk by. Not to mention, it's right at the top of the street. We have a lot of traffic on the street. It's a five-way, and there's people with bikes and, you know, I'm just, I just wanted to make that comment.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, I'm Veronica Bonet. I live at 15 Shimo Pond Road. Good evening. As you all know, it's been over 13 months since Vineyard Wind's blade exploded on our shores. It is about eight months since the Select Board, on Christmas Eve, gave the public one week to submit questions to BSEE, for which over 500 were submitted and zero answers received. The negligence on the part of Vineyard Wind to not even have a pollution plan in place, to have no funds set aside for environmental incidents, and no funds set aside for decommissioning is clear. The Select Board, on behalf of this community, opted to settle with Vineyard Wind's supplier and release Vineyard Wind from any liability with regard to the blade failure, in spite of Vineyard Wind not having even begun the environmental study ordered by BSEE. Yesterday, Maury Healy made it clear that she is committed to offshore wind for the long haul. The next project, New England Wind, is fully permitted and shovel-ready. Staying in the Good Neighbor Agreement shows that the town fully supports a project with over twice the number of turbines, 129, which are 40% taller at 1,170 feet tall and will be clearly visible on the horizon, starting on the east side of Vineyard Wind turbines that we see now, reaching further along the horizon towards Gonset. With these larger turbines comes increased visibility, increased environmental harm, and increased risks to our island, and the increase in harms to endangered whales from dispersment of prey for the next 30 years. We already know from Vineyard Wind that the risks to our historic unobstructed landmark horizon cannot be mitigated. And on top of it, the current funding from either the Good Neighbor Agreement or the settlement with Vineyard Wind will not even offset the increases to our electric bill. Offshore wind is expensive. I have three questions. My first question is, is the Select Board more interested in executing the Healy administration's energy plan than ensuring the conservation of Nantucket and its waters? You can either be 400s more turbines or against. There is no middle ground. My second question is, ultimately, what color were the Vineyard Wind turbines painted? The FAA requires turbines higher than 699 feet to be painted pure white. That is not what is in the Good Neighbor Agreement, and I'd like to know what they ultimately painted them. And my third question is, what evidence does the Select Board have that the FAA has issued a determination of no hazard for the 853-feet turbines? There is nothing on the public record, and the, the determination of no hazard listed in your FAQs is only for the shorter turbines. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, let's come to the mic, please.
I'm David, 28 York Street. And in, in relation to the African Meeting House and the issue, I think that I'd like to see the board look at it as, as, as two separate, there were two separate issues there. There was what happened at, at the Meeting House and the, the signage in the truck. And I would like to see them separated, because I grew up on that street, and I, I knew Mrs. Megabartham very, very well. And it's all in here for me, too. I'm 82 years old, and, and we, we need to look at this. It's, it's an eyesore. I, God love Jimmy. I, I appreciate him, appreciate him very much. But I think it would be a class act to take and put on some sort of a, a sign could be made proper over by, where they have the sign by the fence, so people can understand without having to look at the pictures of, of the phallic symbol and everything. It just, it just doesn't, it's not working anymore. I'd like to see, see if you could, you could separate it and have something that would satisfy Mr. Barrows and, and the community. And, and that would be, we're, we're a class act here, we're trying to be. And it, it just, it's lost, it's lost the effect. And I think it could be better, better approached in, in two separate issues. The issue of what was done and the issue of those of us who want to see something done about it in, in a more polite, classy way. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Amy Elbridge, and I just, I've had this conversation before I think here about that truck on the street. And it is, I understand his First Amendment right. And it is, I understand his First Amendment right, freedom of speech, the whole thing. But that is an embarrassment to the community, to our summer visitors. Five Corners is one of the busiest intersections on this island, and it's been there for seven years. Seven years. I mean, it's just unbelievable that we haven't come to some resolution, we haven't ended this. You know, and the more this drags on with these committee meetings and these things, the more he's going to update the sign. I mean, it's, you know, if we don't get this wrapped up soon in a favorable situation for everybody involved, it's going to continue to happen. But I also fear that, you know, it's not appropriate what's on the sign, but also it's got his First Amendment rights, and he lives in a house around the corner from there, is my understanding. And so, does he have a right to park there? I know, I don't know if the truck is in working order or anything. I've known Jimmy for a very long time, and I know that he, he doesn't want to hurt anybody's feelings. But I really do feel like this, he's trying to keep it in our minds' eye because for seven years, seven years. I mean, it's unbelievable that we're having this conversation seven years later, and we have not come to any kind of resolution that is satisfied to everybody involved. I mean, I'm horrified about what happened in this community that February morning. I was off island. I woke up to an ACT.net alert about what happened, and I was horrified. I'm crying at the Fairfield Inn with all these Nantucket people that are there for a basketball tournament, and we were just shocked and stunned that this happened. But I'm shocked and stunned with the brilliance in this community that we have not solved this in seven years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, thank you. All right, now I'm on minutes warrants. All right, do we have any emotion on these? I have, I had one on the minutes. Does anyone else have anything first?
Malcolm, do you want to talk about the contract?
Yes, I would. Just clarification, the working group was tasked by this group to find an investigative organization to investigate the investigation essentially of the African American House. Incident, we've come up with one, which I think is through the RFP process. It took us a while, but we went through it, I think, in a proper way. There's some question, though, is the future of the committee, because this organization, this investigative group needs someone to coordinate with the town. And certainly, as the select board, since it's our duty, I would be that coordination person. But I would like the committee to stay in place, to also act as a coordinating group. It's certainly the desire of the committee to keep functioning, and it's certainly my desire that I have those people help me in the coordination. It's just a clarification of how long we can keep going.
So, Erica, do you want to speak to that? We have the, we have the ability to extend this committee.
I would just say, let's make that an official agenda item.
Yes.
Since, I didn't realize that that was where the conversation was going, because that's technically new business. So, I would say--
Don and I will talk about it.
We can put it on--
Yeah, and bring it forward.
But I don't think that there is, I don't think that you have, trying to remember, a term expiration currently--
No.
--for your work group.
Right.
So, let us look into that. And I need to remember how exactly it was set up. So.
It may not be, need to be amended.
It might not need even that action.
I'd appreciate that. In the meantime, I'll be, assuming you approve the contract with LCG, I will speak to them individually. And just to be safe, we'll get the committee together after you all figure out the viability and legality of the committee. But it's very important to the committee members, to the community, that it keeps going in a little different role.
Right, makes sense.
Matt?
Any, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we should look very closely at what the charge for that committee was, and if that needs to be amended while we extend it as well. Just, I mean, I believe the charge was sort of the end of the business, that mandate that we gave them was this selection of a firm to do the review of the investigation. So I would be very open to having a conversation about what an amended charge for the committee would be.
Okay, great. And we'll bring that back, then. Are there any other comments on the minutes, other warrants?
Motion to approve all three, Mr. Chair.
I have one change on the August 6th. And it was, it read that I was in favor of it going to the planning board to bring forth the short-term article. And I think my, what I was trying to say is that the stakeholders need to present a single unified article. So I asked for that to be amended, and I gave that to Erica. So if people are all right with that amendment, then we can vote these.
I accepted friendly amendment.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all those, so we'll vote these, everything at once? Do I have a motion?
Tom made it.
All right. All right, so all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
And Don?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so they're all approved. Okay. All right, next up is Nantucket Preservation Trust for the preliminary review of the four Old North Wharf preservation easement.
I'm going to go ahead and review that for you. So the Nantucket Preservation Trust has submitted an historic preservation restriction for four Old North Wharf pursuant to the board's conservation restriction and preservation restriction policy. When a restriction comes forward, you have the ability to give it a preliminary review before it is sent to town council for their review and the issuance of a report. So I would, unless you have anything, any comments in your review, I would recommend that we send this to town council. And then we will bring it back to you once that's been finalized and reviewed and a report has been issued.
All right, thank you. Do we have any comments forward?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Erica, is this something that goes to the, does the Historical Commission or any other requisite boards take a look at this?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, just curious.
I don't think that's under their purview. But Rita Carr is on, and she is the deputy director of the Nantucket Preservation Trust, and she might have a different answer for you.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure Ms. Carr will speak up if she has any comments. But other than that, I would move approval.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's approved. And I will say, I looked to make sure that it had wording for sea level rise and allows, allowing changes, and it actually did. It was one of the key bullet points. So I was pleased to see that that is making its way into these documents. All right, the next, number two, is--
Thank you very much.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry, it's Rita Carr from the Nantucket Preservation Trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, number two, CC Construction requests for waiver of the town bylaw for tree clearing excavation work for the Surfside Area Transportation Enhancement Project, Tuesday, September 2nd to Thursday, September 14th, to allow work to begin at 7:00 a.m. Work areas include Lover's Lane, Orkawa, and Monahan Sett.
I'll take you through this as well. This is a municipal road project, doing drainage, tree clearing, road reconstruction, bike path construction, and utility moving. So, right now, because we're in the summer moratorium from June 15th through September 15th, the noise bylaw doesn't allow construction before 7:30 a.m. This would allow CC Construction to start work at 7:00 a.m., just to take advantage of morning daylight. They're a traveling company, they have to go back and forth every day. So this would give them the opportunity to just get that 30-minute head start every day. And it would just be the period from when they start work until the end date of the summer moratorium. And then it would be 7:00 a.m. from that point forward.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any comments on this? All right, hearing none.
Go ahead, Brooke.
I was going to say, I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, so all, Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I vote aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number three, Sconton Civic Association requests for proposed amendments to Chapter 101, Noise of the Town Bylaws. And who's, who is going to take us through this?
Sorry, Carol Greenberg from the Sconton Civic Association is here, and she's going to be reviewing this matter with you.
All right.
I'm turning it over to Tom Lachlan, Vice President.
Can you just repeat your name?
And could you just state your name, just so everyone can hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, I'm Tom Lachlan. I'm the vice president of the Sconton Civic Association. Thank you for hearing from us today and considering this proposal. The Sconton Civic Association is a member of the Nantucket Civic League, and for the past few years, civic league associations have been talking about concerns about construction and landscaping noise in general. And when we looked at it, the Sconton Association took up an initiative to take a look at the current bylaws. And what we saw was that there really is kind of a hodgepodge right now of rules in the bylaws. Heavy construction equipment versus construction tools have different, different requirements. The, the noise curfews in the historic districts have different times from the noise curfews in the nonhistoric districts. The peak season rules are different from the non-peak season rules, and further, the definition of a peak season is different in a historic district versus a nonhistoric district. So looking at all that, we took, we took a look at the, you know, the current state. We've talked to a variety of stakeholders. In our discussions with the police, they, they felt that the current construct was, from a practical standpoint, really, really wasn't enforceable. So what we've tried to do is put together a proposal, we've got two different versions that have been presented here, that would normalize for the heavier construction equipment versus construction tools and landscaping equipment. It would normalize the same hours year-round, no peak or non-peak, island-wide, so it's not, you know, historic versus nonhistoric districts. And, you know, in a nutshell, it would say that the noise curfews would start at 6:00 p.m. and end at 8:00 a.m. And on Sundays, the, the curfews would end at noon on Sunday, so after church services are out. That's one version. The second version is that there wouldn't be construction noise allowed on Sundays, as well as federal holidays. That was the other thing that we baked in that wasn't in the current bylaws. So, and, you know, in that process, we've, as I've said, spoken with a lot of different stakeholders. We've spoken with Builders Association, with individual builders, with landscapers. We've talked with our town manager, a couple of the select board members, the police. And who, I'm not sure who we haven't spoken with yet. I would say, you know, by and large, we either received support, or I would say, non-objection for the most part, to the proposals that we were putting forward. We did hear some concern about an 8:00 a.m. start from, from Toscana, they had a concern about that. I think, Mr. Chairman or Mr. Fee, that you had some questions also about the start times, particularly in the winter months. But what we've put, you know, we've pretty much done our work on this to this point in presenting what our proposal is right now for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you guys have done a lot of work. It's, it's impressive.
Right, thank you.
All right. All right, we are going to allow public comment? So if there's anyone else?
Hi, I'm Randy Ringer from Three Chuck Hollow Road. Yeah, I think their proposal makes a lot of sense. One of the things, of course, is going to be the whole idea of enforcement. And so I reached out to a number of communities to see what they are doing. And one of the things that they do is, they actually have citizens' video when they see somebody in violation. And then there is a website where you can upload your video within their town. It's not, it's really not vigilanteism. It's basically somebody's out for a walk in their neighborhood, they see somebody who is clearly in violation, they do the video, you can hear the noise, they do the video of the logo on the truck, and they send it into the town, and then the town decides what to do with it one way or the other. So I thought that was a very clever way of expanding the footprint of who actually is going to be helping with the enforcement, because obviously, we have many, many bylaws on the books, and the difficulty always comes down to, how is it enforced? So that was a suggestion.
Right, thank you. Okay?
Hi, my name is Toni Robinson. I'm from Brant Point Association, the president of Brant Point Civic Association. And we are in support of the work that Sconton did, and its enormous amount of activity they've put against making sure that they did talk to the stakeholders and the participants and the people that would be impacted. I think we'd just like to go on the record that the reason that this is so important, and the civic league is being helpful to the, to the town, is there's been enormous abuse, I think. It's not about whether someone needs to ask for a half an hour here or there. It's that they're, they're very, very early in the morning, and they're very, very late at night. And so when you have enormous amount of, of construction going on in your neighborhood, and that's been happening in Brant Point, too, it's that, it's the abuse of it. It's working till 10 o'clock at night with heavy equipment and with things that are, you know, in your dinnertime. So I think the understanding of quality of life and the reason that we're putting this forward is not to be extreme or to try to impact people's livelihood, because we've, we talked about that at our, at our civic league just recently. We're not trying to impose more rules that people need. But it's because of the same issue, Matt, that you brought up about the scooters. It's the abuse. And it's taking advantage of, I think, why all of us are here in Nantucket. We're not in a city, we're in a community, and we really want that to be respected. And this, we're hoping, gives the police department and the neighbors a way of setting a standard that we can all say, this is what is our standard. So I think there's some resistance, we are here to say we didn't want to have to do this, but it's because of the abuse of that. And that's what we'd just like to have, and Brant Point is in support of this.
All right, thank you. All right, Matt, yes?
My name is Mary Warrow. I'm the secretary of the Nantucket Civic League. I'm here with Peter Morrison, who is also on the executive committee. As you probably know, the Civic League is an umbrella organization of 24 neighborhood associations. And there are probably, in any given year, between 1,500 and 2,000 individual dues-paying members of the collective number of the 24 associations. For a long time, the Civic League has heard complaints about noise from virtually all of its, its active members. This is a universal problem that has existed, and we have struggled to find ways of trying to deal with it. We were very happy when the Sconton Association came forward, really honed in on a specific issue that could be dealt with. And they have, they've really done a tremendous job of going out to all, to our associations, to the civic league associations, as well as to any, any number of other stakeholders, and just really covered the map of this, of this effort. And come up with some, and have come up with, with something that I think is a good compromise. It's a beginning, it doesn't, it isn't going to solve all the noise problems that we have on Nantucket, but it will raise people's consciousness. And I think the, what, what we have, what we believe is that you, rather than have an outside individual come forward with a warrant article, if this gets the support from the select board, there will be the resources of, of the internal administration of the town, as well as town council, to, to solve the, the administrative little ticky, ticky problems about enforcement that, that are, that are, that are truly, they can be overcome. Nantucket is, has a history of dealing with these administrative details. And at our most recent meeting, which was August 9th, there was universal support among our, our leaders, at our president's breakfast, for supporting this. for supporting this. And that's why, that's why I'm here, and, and some of our other presidents are here. So, we hope that you will approve this, and work with town council, and get this on the, on the, on the warrant for the next town meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mary. Okay?
Hello, Christina Jelome, representing Toscana Corporation. I do appreciate that Carol has reached out, she's done a ton of work, and talked to a lot of different people. When talking about stakeholders, you know, she reached out to a lot of the landscapers, a lot of the construction people. But what she presented is very different than what she's presenting now. She was presenting different times for peak and non-peak, and it was 7:00, 7:30. The 8 o'clock AM thing, it's just, it's devastating to our industry, to our company, and to construction as a whole. We don't have the opportunity to turn the lights on at 4 o'clock at night during the winter. We have to work during daylight hours. So those hours, if you take an hour and a half, or a half an hour away from us for five days a week, 52 days a year, with all of our employees, it comes out to like 3,900 hours of work, billable work. And that's just one company, not the whole construction industry. So I'd really like you to consider that 8:00 AM is really, a really difficult and financial burden for the construction industry. We all start at 7:00. I know a lot of people, you know, come to work, and they go into an office, and they can start at 9:00 and stay until 5:00 or 6:00. We don't have that option. So, please seriously consider that that late start time is really a difficult and burden for the construction industry.
I have a, just while you're there, I have a question. What if, it, what if it was 7:00 at night and 7:30, 7:00 in the winter and 7:30 in season?
So, that's currently what it is, and we abide to that. So, that, that's the difficulty, is that what's actually presented now has gone above and beyond what's currently on the books, and we've worked with.
But you can work, you can work within, if the start was then, does the stop at 6:00, is that?
For our industry, for our company, it's not a problem. We can abide to it, and we want, we understand the concerns, and we understand the abuse. And we need to work with that in our, within our industry. But I think the 8:00 AM is just a really, really difficult change to the bylaws.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carol. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you can go.
Okay. Carol Greenberg, President of the Wisconsin Civic Association. Thank you all for everything you do. Christina, I apologize to you, you were one of the first people we spoke to. But when we designed this small work group, and spoke to the police chief and others, the idea of this non-peak season, and peak season, and nonhistoric and historic, was so difficult that no one can follow it, the landscapers can't follow it, the builders are working here, and a half-block over here is a different timeframe for them. So, I did note, in all my notes, your concern was 8:00. But this is what the group came up with. So, it was very clear, Christina from Toscana, that 7:30 was her start time, and 8:00 would be an issue. So, please, that has been noted. So, I apologize, you were very early in the gathering of information business. But, we felt, and with the police chief's support, we felt this was something that we could give to the community, we could all come together. 6 o'clock's end time didn't seem to be an issue for maybe one builder and one landscaper. And I can tell you exactly who they are, because I spoke to every one of these 20 people. And some, those two, were not willing to compromise, and this is a compromise. Other than that, I would say, the building community said they do stop at 6:00. It's enough, they can't work their people that way to keep them working till 10 o'clock at night. So it seemed to me, and to the information we gathered, that 6:00 seemed to be something, and I know Toscana for sure, 6:00 was not, was not an issue. But we do recognize that 8:00 is an issue for some. So, compromise, 7:30 to 6:00? Maybe we can all try to live with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
I'm Eldridge, 56 Ankeny Road, Wisconsin. I appreciate all the hard work the civic association's done, but I have some questions on the reduction in hours is gonna drive up building costs for some people, like myself, who if I miss two paychecks, I'm gonna be in a hard place. But if I'm trying to, you know, do work on my home, I wanna get it done quick and fast, and I just wonder what that's gonna do to building costs, as well as these hours, as Toscana was mentioning, those billable hours are gonna keep those people in those job sites longer. When they lose that number of hours, time the number of employees, so I've felt that the 7:30 to, I would even say, 7:30 to 7:00? But, you know, I drive to town probably six times a week, between the hours of 7:45 and the 10:30 boat. And you go down by where they're, where they were doing all the houses, by the old Nista cottages, and you've got people with giant spotlights working on roofs at 10 o'clock at night. That's not appropriate at all. This is in the past. But my question, too, is when the builders go out, and the windows are all in, and people are doing work inside the house, what's stopping the painters and the plasterers from going into these neighborhoods after 6:00 PM and doing work, and making all kinds of noise after those hours? Because sometimes they can't work during the day, they've gotta wait for those people to move out so that the plaster and painters can go in. It's just stuff we gotta think about, because it's a, it's a balance, and a lot of these people are working individuals in our community that need these jobs, and, you know, and I know a lot of plasters and painters that work overnight just to get in and out of a house, so that the next person can get in and put cabinets in. Thank you.
I think, my understanding is that's still allowed? That this is, yeah, that's, that's still allowed? This is equipment? They said both of them were dealing with equipment? I'm correct, right, Erica?
Well, it says, "Operating or permitting the operation of any mechanically-powered tools or equipment actually being used in ongoing building construction." So, that doesn't necessarily mean indoor/outdoor, it's building construction.
Right, but if someone is in painting a house and it's quiet, I don't believe that's ever been an issue. But maybe, correct me if I'm wrong?
I can't speak to that.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay.
Hi, I'm Lynn Filipski, I was on the civic association before, and I'm on the non-voting taxpayers now. And if you go back to when the non-voting taxpayers, in Peter Halli's term, came up with a warrant article, it was defeated, but FinCom recommended, let's try it for the old historic districts, both in town and in Wisconsin. And so this is probably three years that we've had this on the books. And I would suggest that I've heard no builder or landscaper complain about working in the old historic districts under restricted hours. So I would suggest that perhaps this isn't the issue. The issue really is enforcement and uniformity of time wherever you are on the island. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
I just have a couple of quick questions. Do the bylaw exemptions stay in place? So that, like, public works, public safety, oil trucks, gas, trash trucks, they all can still work before 8:00 AM? Okay. And, I just wanted to point out, I might be poking the bear, but we had some complaints early in the summer about golf courses, and specifically, a golf course in Wisconsin, mowing the law, mowing the grounds at like 4:30, 5 o'clock. And golf courses are not exempt from the bylaw? And if they can't mow the tees, and the, the greens and everything until 8:00 AM, how is that going to impact the running of the golf courses? Just curious about that.
Does anyone like to speak to that? And, and didn't, all right, come.
Peter Halli. I'm Chairman of the, or Chair of the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers, as Lynn referred to. I think a specific answer to the question, and that's what I'm standing up to try to answer, is that this applies, as I read it, only to licensed construction. In other words, you have to have a license to construct something in order for these changes to the bylaw to apply. So it would not, I think, in direct answer to the lawn mowing question, apply to lawn mowing at golf courses, just as wouldn't apply to a lot of the other noisy activities that we all find part of our daily lives. So it's a rather modest proposal in a very limited area.
And I would say I don't understand the licensing part, because I don't know a single landscaping company that is licensed through the town.
I was thinking the same thing. I think it is landscapers as well, with machines on them, all right?
I just, to follow up on the question about golf courses and the likes, you know, first of all, this proposal really is about construction equipment, construction noise, landscaping noise. There are other bylaws that cover things like what time trash and recycling can start. This proposal doesn't address that, is, you know, we tried to put some walls around where this went. The, and the golf course issue, I'm not sure if there are any special exemptions in the law or not, but if there, you know, right now, if they're in the habit of 4:30 or 5:00 AM, and if, you know, the golf courses fall under this bylaw already, that's earlier than the current bylaw allows. Which is, which, and the current by, bylaw allows, depending, again, you know, historic, nonhistoric, peak, and non-peak, you've got start times. The earliest start time under the current bylaws is 7:00 AM, Monday to Friday. So, I guess, you know, we weren't trying to address the, the golf course questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Any board comments? Uh, Cal?
I just wanted to add that this does not, this has nothing to do with farming, sustainable Nantucket, and of course, the golf courses. I don't know what's gonna be done with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just, as point, I think 8:00, 7:30 is a more reasonable time. Compromise of all that's been said.
Okay. Tom, or Brooke?
Matt. Matt? Yeah. Yeah, so, here are a couple of thoughts. There's, there is a reason for a seasonal shift, and it is about daylight hours, right? To Christina's point, that that a, a day in the summer, a workday in the summer falls at a different time of day than a workday in the off-season, in terms of outside work and daylight hours. So, I, I appreciate, and initially was sort of in favor of, let's keep it all the same, for simplicity's sake. But as I, as I listened to Christina speak, I think we have to be cognizant of that fact, and maybe it's just simply a shift to an hour earlier, and maybe through you, Christina, could answer, if we went 7:00 to 5:00, instead of 8:00 to 6:00 in the winter months, because it is dark at 4:00, 4:30 in the winter months, would that be adequate if we picked the right sort of time to make that seasonal shift? And then, I do, I'm okay with it being island-wide. I think from an enforcement point of view, having it like geographic boundaries around different times is just unenforceable. So, island-wide, and also, I suspect that, you know, the idea of, of the more condensed areas of housing having different rules from the less condensed, but we are finding more and more neighborhoods, you know, outside of those districts that are, the houses are close together, and the noise is traveling. So I don't mind the island-wide consistency. And then, the other thing I wanted to say was, there were two proposals in the packet, and we haven't even touched on Sundays and holidays here at all. But I would suggest that any bylaw, or, or any warrant article that gets put forward is reviewed by the moderator, so that whichever, I think we should pick one lane, and then see if town meeting wants to amend one way or the other. And that should be on the advice of the madam moderator as to which version is the one that could be amended to get to the other version, if that were the, the will of town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Christina, seasonal, what do you think of Brooke's?
No, I really appreciate Brooke's consideration for our business. I'm, we're only the excavation company, but for us, that would definitely make a big difference.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dawn? Okay?
I think that that's a really good suggestion, that, that it changes seasonally, and just shifts by one hour. I am concerned about a full ban on Sundays and all federal holidays. It was my suggestion to have, have federal holidays be consistent with Sundays, but I believe that people should be able to work those afternoons if they choose to. There are many subcontractors that, that don't get paid for holidays and so forth. So I, I'm much more in favor of the 12, what is it? Is it 12:00 to 6:00 on Sundays is allowed? I think, we, we talked about it being consistent with after church hours.
So you're suggesting 12:00 to 6:00 on Sunday?
And all those people can choose not to work, but I, I think that people should be allowed to have the option.
Okay.
Which, which is the proposal that we're looking at. Yeah. Is it 12, it's 12:00 to 6:00, right? Or, not 12:00 to 5:00? Yeah, 12:00 to 6:00.
Yeah.
So the 6:00 is consistent all the way through, unless we, until we do a seasonal shift.
Okay. So, so the action, are we looking for an action tonight from this board? Do we, do we wanna support this, or support this as we sort of heard tonight? Or do we wanna consider that, you know, talk about this further? What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I would just say that I support both Brooke and, and Dawn's ideas. I think those are reasonable. I also wanna commend the civic, the civic association folks for all the work they spent on it. They spoke to a lot of people. And I think this is a really good venue to workshop something like this, so the community can be aware of that this is coming, so there are no surprises on town. I mean, not that the warrant isn't published and all that, but that, that, that that's way out in advance. So I would support those general parameters. And then, once we get close to having our hearings for the, for town meeting and closing the warrant, I'm sure some new folks will find out about it, and they can come and lend. But, but for our general parameters, where we're going, I, I think this, this makes a lot of sense.
I agree, Mr. Chair. I think we're in general agreement.
Do we need a, would you like to make a vote on this, or what's the?
So I think the request, and correct me if I'm wrong, is does the board support an article and want to be a sponsor of it for town meeting? Or, is the board supportive of it, but wants the Wisconsin Civic Association to submit a citizen warrant article to put this forward? Is that, did I get that right?
Yeah, yes. Brooke?
I, I favor having it as a select board-sponsored article, just because we don't generally have extensive conversation when we're setting the warrant on citizen warrant articles, and there's more opportunity for public input if it is a select board-sponsored article. So, I would go that route with the adjustments that we talked about tonight. And I think I would favor that.
All right.
Yeah, and moreover, that, that's a really good point, and also that if it's a, if it's a select board warrant article, will give more opportunity for town council to vet it, and for it to be a more fulsome process.
So, we have general agreement? Do we need a vote for this? Do people feel comfortable? Um, yes?
Yeah, just one point of clarification. So if we're looking at maintaining a seasonal shift, we need to define what the season will be, because in the historic districts right now, the peak season is defined in the current bylaw as July 1st to Labor Day, and in the nonhistoric districts, it's defined as June 15th to Labor Day, uh, June 15th to September 15th, so it's...
If I might, Mr. Chair?
Which language? Which language to put into the, into the proposal?
I would like to look at the sunrise and sunset, you know, for, you know, the typical winter, and pick a time. I think it's probably going to be a, a shorter season that it shifts than has been traditional. If we're doing it based on daylight hours, I suspect that it will be a little bit later in the fall, and it may actually be a shorter seasonal shift. But I, I would like to just look at sunrise, sunset, and set it based on that.
That's ambiguous.
No, I don't mean, I don't mean, we would set it, but I want to do some research. We would pick dates, but I don't know off the top of my head when, you know, it would need to shift to 7:00 a.m. in terms of the astronomical, is that what I'm saying? As we, as we write out the article, we would investigate and, and propose that timeframe.
Gotcha.
I think I'm okay, I'm okay with that. Is that, okay.
So I defer to Libby or John Giorgio whether or not you need a vote at this time. It seems like your consensus is to move this forward as a board-sponsored article.
Yes, it is.
Libby?
I think you just leave it on the list for now, and as we get closer, the board can make a determination. We'll start looking at this in October.
Okay, great.
And if Brooke has the research done by then, she can give us specifics, and we can work it in and bring it back.
Brooke's going to go to the farmer's almanac. All right, great, thank you.
I'm going to the internet, not to the farmer's home.
Come on, Brooke, you're old like me. All right. I was looking at, oh, just for the record, there was another letter that came in in support of this from the Scotset Casino that I forwarded, so we'll have that in the packet. I didn't want, it's a done to think that I was ignoring him. Okay, so we'll move on. We are on number four, Universal Content Productions, Five Star Weekend Film Production Scheduled.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to be recusing from this item.
Okay.
Hi. How are you guys doing? Chantelle Bliss Murphy, Director of Culture and Tourism, here to speak on this request. We got a request from Greg Kyoto, who's the location manager for Universal Pictures for the upcoming Five Star Weekend film. Their hope is to film on island from September 10th to October 2nd. You're probably wondering why we're putting a film permit and street blocking permit requests in front of you, when my office typically handles film permits and Erica in the town admin office handles the street blocking permits. But we wanted to present this ask as a blanket ask to you all, as one, a notification to the select board and to the community, the larger community, that there's a big production coming, and it is expected to be a little disruptive, probably not nearly as disruptive as media had put it out to be. We tried to tighten up the hours a little bit. Admittedly, I told them, you know, Matt, you're in a restaurant. We're throwing pasta on the ceiling and seeing what sticks. And we will, of course, continue to have conversations, like we did last Friday, with our walkthroughs with Public Safety at all of these sites that were requested. We'll continue to meet with our friends out in Scotset, like we did last Thursday, to make sure that if we're going to be in any areas, if you approve this, if we'll be in any areas that we're having conversations with both the residents and the businesses, and anyone that would be disrupted. If you look through your packet, you see that we have a very stringent notification process that we require for anyone planning on filming or taking, doing photography on the island. But we actually made it a little bit, we, we fine-tuned it a lot more and tightened up the, the requests for hours a bit more in comparison to the previous packet that was put out. So I can go through this, just go through each request, kind of in a blanket. They're asking for a noise bylaw waiver for 17 locations. We probably overshot it a little bit with all of those requests, but again, we asked them, just ask for everything you want. Nine of those locations are because there'll just be heavy traffic in certain areas before 7:00 a.m. or 7:30 a.m., and I'm imagining that having three trucks dropping off camera equipment is going to cause a little extra noise. So we asked them to submit noise bylaw waiver requests for those areas. Three of those for the pre-7:00 a.m. time are on public property. The others are actually filming on private property. We asked them to submit for eight locations, after looking through the list, because they're doing some night scenes. Many of them are, again, private property, but we expect that with just additional people in those areas, that it would be causing noise, and we want neighbors to be notified of those potential disruptions. Again, only three of those are on public property, being Main Street for two, and the packet says Easy Street. While the address is on Easy Street, they're actually using the Little Oak Street, Side Street, for that early morning shoot. Street blocking permits, as of right now, they're asking for actually four. It's been fine-tuned a little since we submitted this, four locations spread over three days for intermittent holds. So that's holding traffic for 15 minutes, the cars driving through, and then they let traffic through, and just kind of doing that until they capture the scene. Full street closures for eight locations over five days, sprinkled throughout the island. And then film permit requests for a number of locations, many of which, again, are on private property. So we wanted to present everything to you. It's all in the packet. I'm happy to call out days and times, but again, I can't stress enough that this is kind of a moving target, because even though you might look at it and it says 6:00 to 11:00, it's, I've seen a lot of, a lot of the, the scenes, it's reading two lines on a piece of paper, and I can't imagine it's going to take them five hours to do that.
Erica?
So Chantelle, can you just clarify? Because originally, we had the agenda items say waivers of town noise and lighting bylaws, and can you just note that the lighting bylaws part is?
Yes, so the lighting bylaw portion has been taken out. After meeting with Scotset Civic Association and the Scotset Trust folks, we're going to be working with the film crew on just adjusting those times. And then, of course, a few of the other places that they're planning on filming at night, they'll be inside at that point, and then also down at crew. Again, they'll be inside, so I didn't think it was necessary for that. Thank you, Erica, for pointing that out. Like I mentioned, we met with Public Safety and did a walkthrough of these locations. So after that walkthrough, we kind of adjusted the locations, and of course, looking at some of the street projects that we have proposed through the town, we're realizing that some of these also need to shift a little bit, so that we don't conflict with any of our own projects. So happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? From the board?
I have a comment.
Comment, Malcolm?
Well, I think this is obviously going to be very disruptive. We certainly don't need the publicity. I'm not sure what advantage we have to it. If we do this, I think a for-profit company should be willing to perhaps contribute to the food bank, or the rental assistance program, or the oil program. I would support it if they would be willing to do something like that. Otherwise, I see no advantage to the community.
May I?
Yes.
I just want to add that they are working with a lot of nonprofit organizations to make donations, and many of the trusts and such that they will need to talk to to get permissions, they are having those conversations privately. And I'm privy to those conversations. I just don't know if it's necessarily my place to speak for those organizations. So I'm, I'm not in disagreement with what you're saying, Malcolm, essentially.
I would just like to have some guarantee, not just discussion. I mean, you can discuss forever, and I'd like to know that it's actually going to happen.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, Brooke or Dawn? Since I don't have you in front of me, any comments?
Brooke is recused.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Dawn, you have any comments right now?
No, I'm just, I mean, I, I agree with Malcolm. Nantucket's becoming very branded, but this is also, you know, something that was written here by someone who lives here, and I think it's a positive thing. I appreciate that they're working with the community and that they're going to do some good.
All right, well, thank you.
Hello, Peter Burke, Executive Director of the Nantucket Chamber of Commerce. I'm here in that capacity. Speaking out of both sides of my mouth, we obviously represent 740 businesses that may be, will be impacted by the filming process, which, again, I've met with Greg and the film team, and, or at least the, the location scouts here, and they're well aware of that. This is not their first time filming in Massachusetts, nor in a seasonal community. So I appreciate the legwork they've done already. We kind of had a strategy meeting on, you know, businesses to outreach to and those locations that they're at. Certainly, nothing is going to work perfectly. But also, on the other side, you know, we look at the impact of filming in Massachusetts. We're a grant recipient from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism, and with that comes a connection to the Mass Film Office. It's well documented that film tourism does drive tourism dollars. Speaking as someone who answers the phone at the Chamber of Commerce on a daily basis, Ms. Elderbrand's books drive a lot of tourism interest in the island, and people volunteer up that they've experienced them first through those books. So I don't want to discount the fact that a short-term disruption, if we're looking at the economic impact long-term, economic impact is going to be measured by, right, hotel dollars and tax dollars for years to come. And I think the fact that it's filming in the fall is advantageous for us, because it's going to portray the fall as the, as the setting. I also think that the, you know, the natural seasonal, you know, July and August are already so busy, there's only so many boats and so many hotel rooms. I do feel like this is a chance for the community to capture some tourism dollars in the shoulder season, in terms of if you're looking at the very long-term impacts. I don't know. I don't know if the show is going to be good or not. That's not my, that's not my purview, but when we look at, through the lens of, you know, tourism dollars and awareness, you really can't beat film and production. And across the state, it's, it's been well documented. So to that end, we're still going to promote and push for our, for our businesses and make sure that the production is least disruptive, but yeah, that's our piece.
All right, thank you. All right. Jenny Benz?
Charity Benz.
Charity Benz, sorry.
Go ahead.
Charity Benz.
Charity, you need to unmute.
Okay, thank you. I have two questions. One is, it was noted that filming is going to occur on private properties. I'd like to ask how much those private property owners are being compensated for the use of their property? The second question I have is how much is the town receiving in fees for a permit for this period of time and the disruption it's going to cause the community? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chantelle, do you have those?
I can't speak to how much property owners are being compensated, because I don't know what they rent their multimillion-dollar homes for in a week versus the 10 days that they'll be filming at those. I don't know if that, that's also not my place to ask someone what they're renting their space for. As for the town fees, all of our fees are listed on the town's website for filming on private property, because again, it's on private property. It's $100 per day for what they're doing on those private properties. And then, once they're on public property, it tends to vary. It's $1,100 plus $100 a day fee, and then, of course, there's a police detail fees that they'll have to cover separately. There are a host of other fees that come with those film, with filming on the island that gets paid into, into the town. So it's not, it's, it's not a small amount.
All right, great, thank you. All right.
Hi, Kit Murphy, and I forget if it was Chantelle or Peter who said that the film production company is working very closely and has been working for a long time on this, and I don't doubt that. What I have a problem with is it's just being presented to you all right now, and you're up against crunch time because they want to start filming in September. And I also want to point out that, yeah, there will be income brought in, but they're going to be filming right in the center of the wedding industry sweet spot on Nantucket. And is enough income going to be brought in if we continue to allow things like this to happen in our busy shoulder season? And is that income going to be enough to quite possibly set off, excuse me, offset any loss of income from fewer weddings?
All right.
I just think the wedding industry has been around a lot longer and should be given some credence to it.
All right, great, thank you. Dawn?
I'm, I'm happy to answer that. So yes, we've been having conversations about this since last October, because the last time that any production company wanted to film on the island, they did not realize what it took to get ferry reservations, to get their equipment to the island, or bring their cast and crew to the island. There was a lot. So while at a conference, I happened to be speaking to the Massachusetts Film Office at a Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism conference, and I mentioned, if you want to film on the island, start talking early. Let us get a good sense of what you're trying to do. Let me talk to all of our, our folks that are involved in the permitting process, police, fire, town admin, sometimes even health department, to make sure that that's actually feasible before we bring anything forward, because I'm not in the business of bringing half-baked plans. But as far as disruptions to the wedding industry, the filming, and that's, of course, a concern of mine as the Director of Culture and Tourism as well, the filming actually happens majority midweek. They don't have very many dates that they're actually filming on the weekends, and for the dates that they're filming on the weekends, they're on private property. So as far as filming on public property, it's, it's midweek.
And no Sundays.
And no Sundays as well.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chantelle, I have two minor questions for you. One is, were all the permit applications submitted on time in a timely manner?
A lot earlier than on time.
A lot earlier than on time, okay. I saw that some of the, one of the deadlines, I believe, is like 60 days or something before.
Yeah.
I'm going to lead into some of my editorializing later, but the other thing is, and I'm sure you met with Public Safety, and I know this is something you've thought of, but the closure for Easy Street, for 26 Easy Street, will that affect the steamship at all?
It will not. It's actually not closing Easy Street at all, it's Oak Street. So the address of the building, if you will, I don't want to talk about their movie and ruin it, but the address is technically 26 Easy, however, they're using that Oak Street.
That's what you referred to.
And it would only be a portion of Oak Street from South Water Street extension. You can still turn right and go out to South Water Street.
Yes, keeping in mind the delivery trucks and trash trucks and such, I have to.
I, I just want to note, too, that I was on the walk-around with Public Safety, and so I was all over that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I know you would be. I know you were. But maybe that's something that we could take a look through licensing petitions, the permit dates for that. Maybe it should be six months or a year, I don't know. But, and, and then, my kind of thoughts on this are just generally, and then I'll, I'll let Julie go here, or Matt, the chair, will let Julie go, is that I'm torn on this. I, I think it is a disruption. I agree with a lot of Malcolm's sentiments, and if I do agree with this in the end, I'd like to request two things. One is that for any major production over a certain level, that, if my, if the board agrees, of course, I mean, we can talk about this at licensing petitions, or I, the chair and vice chair can do an agenda item for later, but I just wanted to throw this out there. Preliminary review for us to a production over a certain size, I think would be a really good conversation, then maybe the public can weigh in, and we can talk about what, what we're hearing, or what a busy summer it is, or traffic, or whatever. And the other one is, after this production, if it, if it is permitted, to do an after-action report on the impact and disruptions, maybe from you and maybe from Public Safety, et cetera. Nothing too elaborate, but I, I think it would be a valuable public exercise for our board through licensing petitions or something like that, to say, okay, well, how did this actually affect the community? Because I, you know, there's some stuff on the press, there's some social media, there's whatever we all might think, but we'll see what, what actually happened.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the action, the after look is really important. I also, I look, when I was looking through it, I looked at, you know, is some of this happening at places that are kind of hotspots like now? Is this on, you know, is this on, you know, the Bluff Walk? Or is this, you know, is this going down to, you know, Steps Beach? Or is this going to Matikit at someplace that we have issues? And luckily, it's not, because I think one of the problems that we are, as a community, are dealing with is we're being kind of loved to death. And places that we're okay with just a little bit of, you know, that we're, you know, now with the internet era. with the internet era and TikTok and, you know, everything's instantaneous, places are being overrun, and, and they're not what they were. So, I worry that stuff like this will give away some of those secrets and, you know, or give away and make things more, you know, ma- make it so that we lose access to places, or that places are not open as much for the public, or they aren't as good. So, I just think we have to be very careful about promoting the island, you know, like the insider. You read these things in the New York Times and the LA paper and whatever, and they're talking about stuff, and I'm like, "They're going to ruin it."
Yeah.
So, so I think that, you know, we've got to be, as a board and as a town, be protective in some ways of those places that are really special. So, that's, anyway, sorry.
May I make a comment, Mr.?
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Chair? Full disclosure, they did request a portion of the Bluff Walk.
Okay.
So...
So, that is there?
It's still a conversation.
All right.
I also want to stress that any location that's listed in this movie isn't actually listed as that location. So, even though you see the Summer House, it turns into a spa in the movie. They could be filming in my living room, to be honest, and you would never be able to tell the difference. The, the, there's a request for a bike ride, if you will, and we walked the bike ride area. That area is still, we're having conversations about whether or not that will work, because it does include a portion of the Bluff Walk, and I know my friends in Skanset weren't happy about that.
Okay.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to piggyback on that. There were other locations, too, that we looked at preliminarily that we realized this isn't going to work for X, Y, and Z reasons, and so those were taken off the table.
All right, good. Thanks. Sorry.
Hi, no, no problems. Thank you, and I appreciate your comments about the concerns. I'm Julie Reddick Mead. I'm a Skanset resident, Skanset Trust Executive Director. I won't go through the letter that I wrote. I just would like a couple of clarifications. Carol Greenberg from the Civic Association, I walked through with Chanta and the production site managers, and some of what I heard tonight conflicts with some of what we saw then. So, the lighting waiver, there was a big talk about a truck and an articulating arm to light the footbridge, which I believe is public property, for the dusk scene of the bike ride. So, it sounds like now that's been taken out. And then, my other question is, the comment about the fact that none of the, none of the shooting would be done on public property during the weekends, maybe Friday isn't considered a weekend, but the conversation we had was Friday, the 26th, in Skanset. And I am, having had a daughter get married on Saturday, September 28th, I'm very concerned about, as Kit Murphy mentioned, the wedding and the people that are going to be there on that Friday. So, I guess the two questions are just confirming that there is no lighting anymore, artificial lighting being proposed, and also, has there been a shift? When we did our walkthrough, it was the Summer House, it was the footbridge, and it was a portion of Front Street. Now, I understand maybe Baxter Road's part of it, the Bluff Walk, it just keeps changing, so it's very hard for us to know what's being asked. And we've commented on what we were told, and if it's being changed, we are probably going to have further concerns and comments, but we don't know that. Thank you.
All right, Chanta?
So, I, I took your concerns about the, that big light, because I was concerned about it as well, and I came back out to Skanset after hours around the time that they were hoping to be filming through you, Mr. Chair. I realize I'm looking at you.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I realized that personally, if I lived in Skanset and I had to deal with that, I wouldn't be comfortable with that. So, we, we did take that into consideration. There's also, Baxter Road was always on the list, but it's that, it's that car again, the car with the camera. So, it's not like there, there won't be people on, on the street, if you will. They're just, they're getting B-roll. That's, and that's always been on the list. I think the only thing that changed about that was the date that they'll, they'd be doing it. So, that was, that was it.
And, and that's the Friday that we're discussing?
That is actually not a Friday. Bear with me, let me see if I can...
Yeah, did the Friday change? Could someone?
The drive-by of Baxter Road is happening on Saturday, but it's literally a car driving down the road, the same thing we saw again. When I talk about, I mean, like, when I say we're not filming on streets, or not filming on weekends, they're not sitting, they're not out and about in the community. They're on private property, because we don't want that, we don't, we can't block streets on weekends. Like, we just can't. So, that wouldn't actually be a blocking. It's just them driving around.
All right.
And then, I'm sorry, what was? What was your other concern? Yeah, that's a part of the conversation that I said we'd be continuing the conversation.
The light, the light is gone.
The light isn't happening.
The light is gone, and it sounds like no on Friday, and the only thing that is happening is a car driving.
Exactly. That's a part of, that's that same route.
You'll have to come to them. Carol, Carol, you have...
Yeah, sorry.
You'll have to come, sorry.
So, there's a bike ride that happens. Let me just explain it all, because we did this walkthrough. There's a bike ride that happens, and I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher the names of the streets, but they come over the footbridge, they go down, they take a left, they go through the square, that we learned on our walk is actually a circle, and then it comes back down the street. So, that area was going to be contentious, because, one, it covers a portion of the Bluff Walk, and I recognize that they had concerns about the Bluff Walk. I get the concerns emailed to my office regularly, and we're working together on addressing those. I personally didn't feel comfortable having that out there. It seemed to me like they were trying to just get a Shell Street, so that's a further conversation with the company.
All right.
And Carol, you know we're coming back to you, because I told you we're coming back.
All right.
So, once, and I did tell, tell them, "Once we firm up everything, we're coming back to have a conversation, to make sure that they're comfortable with everything." But like I said, I told the company, "Ask for what you need, and we will decide if it's going to work after we have conversations with everyone involved."
Okay, great. Kit?
I was going to say, you, excuse me, I was going to say Charity's hand is up so she can go first if she wants.
Charity?
Maybe she forgot to do...
Charity, you can unmute.
I just saw that. As a taxpayer, I would like to know how much of the cost of this is going to be offset by the permit fees? And, other than some benefit to members of the Chamber of Commerce, I agree with Matt, I agree with Malcolm, and I agree with Tom. What is in this for the people who live here? Thank you.
Okay. Kit?
Hi, Kit Murphy again. Charity touched on something I was going to touch on. I went through something very similar when I lived in the North End with the Big Dig and then the air parcel rights. And I remember the North End air parcel right had this huge plan for some sort of museum to bring more people into the North End, which was the absolute last thing the North End needed ever. And we were able to get the city of Boston to use that air parcel right to do something that would truly benefit the North, North End. And that's kind of where I'm coming at now. Why can't we do something that benefits the people that already live here, as opposed to attracting more people to come here? And finally, this is in September and October. That's the time of the year that the people who are here all year and work hard all year just get to take a breath and start relaxing a little bit. And that's important, and it's being taken away from them. I'm not against filming here. I just think it would have been better if, and I know they planned a long, long time, but we're all just hearing about this now. And I don't think that's quite fair. I don't think it's fair to you to be pressured into making a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, board, any thoughts?
I was just going to say regarding the street and sidewalk blockings, if you do vote to approve those, I would like you to consider that as like a blanket approval with final details to be worked out through town administration, which, who is the final signer of these blockings, anyway?
That's you. I don't, I don't see any of us wanting to do that. Okay.
I also want to add that it's the same thing with the phone permitting as well, but we want, we want you all to, to have a, obviously, a say and knowledge of what's happening.
Hello?
Yes?
My name's Greg Kyoto. I'm the location manager for the production. I'm the face that you're going to see in the community. I just want to thank the board and the community. We understand that will be guests in your community, and I wanted to thank you for the consideration and let you know that I look forward to making you proud for, for hosting us.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, too.
Any questions? All right. All right, do we have any, do we have a, what would we like to discuss?
Well, I, ma'am, Mr., Mr. Chair, I'm habit.
That's fine.
That's all right. I'm still looking for the net benefit of the community. We don't need more people here. There's going to be business, it's going to be generated, but if this turns out that we have 500 more people next summer, I'm not sure it's to the benefit. And I'd also like to know more about what financial gain besides the fees the company is willing to give to the island.
Would you like to answer that?
Oh, Mr. Chair, we, we do plan on engaging several of those. Right now, that it's an ongoing process that, that we are trying to keep at a private level at the moment, but that is happening, I can assure you, and, and happy to inform you once things are solidified.
I understand that, but again, it's discussion. I mean, you could just write a check to the food bank, and we'd all be happy.
And...
Be simple.
Donations are, corporation donations have to be vetted, things like that, but it is happening.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a motion or thoughts? You want to ask another one?
Yeah.
Tom has a question?
Mass?
Yeah, thanks.
Start, if, if we were to deny this, what, what would your status be? Because you're only, obviously, two weeks away, and I'm sure you have hotel reservations and all that stuff, and, you know, I think that's something we're all mindful of, but you heard a...
The, the, the cost ramifications for the money committed would be significant detrimental.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Yeah, this is exactly, this is exactly what I was thinking about a preliminary meeting, because then we could hear this, and I, I understand you probably, there's lots of things you can't say, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
That's right.
I agree with you, and we've been talking about doing some updates to a lot of the policies, because it puts my office in a really difficult position with the current deadlines that we have in place, because then I have limited time to vet the information and then present it to you all as well. So, I agree. And there is a policy, a draft policy update on Rick's desk, that I'm hoping will, will come to you all soon, because I, I agree. It really does put us in a tough spot. And if I could speak to a bit of the ramifications, if this doesn't go through, the, it's in the millions for local businesses that those dollars are already committed to for the crews that are coming out. So, we keep talking about what's the impact on the community. It's millions of dollars. I can speak to one organization, and I won't call them out, one business that I know that they're spending that much with them, just to be able to, to host the, the group that will be here. So, and that's just one. I also know that there are individuals in this room who have not spoken up, that clearly don't want to be named, who are working with them for permissions to use certain areas that will impact them, that are nonprofit organizations, that they, they won't be able to film in those areas without working out the donations. I just, I can't speak for those people, so it kind of puts me in an uncomfortable position. But I understand where you're coming from, Malcolm, and I'm a member of this community. I sit on a lot of these boards outside of the many roles that I, that I'm in, in official capacity with the town, and I have those, those same feelings, and have, have also been mindful of those things. And I've had the organizations reaching out to me to let me know this is what's happening. So, thank you.
Well, again, Mr. Chair, I, I just don't like this whole situation.
Right.
I mean, you know, millions of dollars to be lost, millions of dollars to come in. We're not sure what's really happened. The plans aren't set. And then, we have two weeks? This is crazy.
Don?
I will say that this was going to be on a prior agenda, and it was put off to work out some more of these details to this meeting. But I, I also, the, the question I had was the concern about September 26th from some of the Skanset residents and it being a very large wedding weekend. Is there a way to move that off of a Friday?
Ma'am?
Yes, please.
The date for the 26th, it was originally the 27th, and we've been doing ongoing outreach to the locations that we're planning on, and this was actually a reaction to already booked. We're strategizing to, to fit into schedules of the community. We're not trying to come in and, and impose, "This is when we're filming." The ongoing process of our schedule is to be in areas that can accommodate us on the date, so that shift to the Friday was to allow for a wedding that was happening Saturday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I, I'm tending to support it hesitantly, and, and I'll, and the reason why is I think, you know, I do think it's a sort of, it's, it's underway. I don't see, you know, I would feel, I would feel like we were doing something unreasonable stopping at this point. I hope in the future that we, and I, and I do feel like there's been a lot of effort to address some of the issues. And so, so I do think, but I think in the future, we need to get this earlier. I also think that, I do think September, October, highlighting the island then is a better thing than highlighting peak summer or pretending it's peak summer. I also, you know, I, and I do see the benefit of some Ellen Hill de Brand's books, you know, there, we have weekends in February where all the hotels are full, you know, which, you know, you go to the Nantucket Hotel, and it's, and it's full, and, and there's people coming here then and, you know, enjoying the island. And so, you know, if it, if it's leading to that, that's, that, when we can handle it, and, you know, when it's a positive, that's great. I think, you know, pushing the peak, you know, you guys have all heard me talk continually of that, I don't think is necessary. I think it's actually counterproductive and will lead to hurting us in the long term. You know, I think that we are, you know, so, so I'm, so I'm, so I support it hesitantly, but I think we, I think we should, you know, but I'll, I'll let others speak on that. Don?
Sorry. I tend to agree with you, Matt. I, I do appreciate the, the vetting that's been done to make this work in the best way possible, and I also appreciate the idea of policy changes to have the board and some of the community have a little bit more understanding of this earlier. But I, I do see benefits, and I, I guess I would make a motion to support it, and we'll see how...
And work, work with, working through Erica, et cetera?
The process goes. Correct.
So, the motion would be to...
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion.
Items A, B, and C.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, with working, continuing to work through town administration.
Okay. Do we have a second?
And the satisfaction of town admin for all, everything's worked out. Yeah, I'll second for just discussion for one comment, Matt.
Okay.
I 100% trust Chanta and Erica.
And I also appreciate the idea of policy changes to have the board and some of the community have a little bit more understanding of this earlier. But I do see benefits and I I guess I would make a motion to support it and we'll see how.
And work with, working through Erica, etc.
Process goes. Correct.
So the motion would be
So I'll make a motion.
Items A, B, and C.
Yes. Yes, with working, continuing to work through town administration.
Okay. Do we have a second?
And the satisfaction of town admin for all, everything's worked out. Yeah, I'll second for just discussion for one comment, Matt.
Okay.
I 100% trust Chantaw and Erica to flag the worst quote unquote of it. So I will support this for the same reasons that Matt and Dawn laid out, but I think for the future we really will need to have a continued discussion on any more of the, I mean, I spend the majority of my time in Maticet and thinking of something being like this on Smith Point makes my skin crawl a little bit, but it I'll end my second there.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second? All right, let's vote. Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm? Dawn?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So it's three to one. All right, thank you. Okay, town managers report. Review of the preliminary general budget projections.
Thank you. So Brian's going to come up and review the presentation that's in your packet and just to remind you, this is kind of a high level pre-rev step one in the process.
Hold on, Libby. Please no talking when you're heading out, please. We've still got a meeting to run. Thank you. All right, Libby.
Sorry. It's, this is kind of a pre-step one in the budget development process for fiscal '27. We have barely started with fiscal '26, but we're already looking at beginning our process for fiscal '27. These are some high level projections to get it out there, what we are sort of potentially looking at, what items to flag, what items we're starting to think about for the upcoming budget. And I might interject a little bit here and there, but Brian is going to take you through and we've been, we've worked on this presentation for a couple of weeks now with Brian's staff, Sue and Stephen. They've been very, very helpful and Rick, Greg, and myself. Brian?
Thank you, Libby, and through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. As we present, what I would say are extremely preliminary and as I always say, even in the September meeting, please don't get married to this. It's going to change probably many times over the course of the development of the budget. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. So we'll start with getting to what the projected allowable limit, levy limit is for 2027 and then what the maximum allowable levy limit for 2027 would be. We're putting in to the presentation, the fiscal '25 actual that was certified when we set the tax rate. So we start for fiscal '26 with the levy limit being projected at $112,360,000. Add to that for fiscal '26, 2.5%, which is 2.8 million. New growth, which our assessor who had stayed through to the meeting projecting $1.2 million, which would give us a preliminary projected levy limit to start the '27 projection of 116.4 million. We would add to that debt exclusions for fiscal '26, which are 13.4 million, and we did approve a capital exclusion in the amount of 1.5 million. So for fiscal '26, which as the town manager noted, we have just started the budget process and we are beginning also the process of getting ready to present to you in December, the tax rate proposals would have a maximum allowable levy limit of 131.4 million. So for '27, we're projecting that our starting point for the levy limit calculation is the 116.4 million. Adding 2.5% increase is allowable under Mass General Law would be 2.9 million. And with the assessor's help, we do reasonably believe that we would be able to project 1.2 million in new growth for fiscal '27, which would give us a levy limit of 120.5 million. Debt exclusions, 13.2 million. And we're very early in the capital process, so we are putting in a projection of $850,000 for capital exclusion, as the board knows. Over the last few budget cycles, we have used capital exclusions to replace the majority of the rolling stock. Primarily has been the focus of those capital exclusions. Next slide, please, Erica. So we're projecting on this slide, on slide three, the local estimated receipts. We have included actuals here. We have highlighted two that are probably the most influx still, I would say at this point, rooms tax. There's a slight increase in the projection. We did bring in in fiscal '25, 13.3 million. However, when we annualize and average out and project the increase, it did show potentially a small increase. Again, this is in, still under discussion and review because we have not received the first payment from the Commonwealth for the room occupancy tax that, as the board knows, is not received until September 30th. So it is something that we want to highlight as something that will most likely change depending on what that September payment looks like. And then investment income. Excuse me, with where the interest rates have been and where the Fed rate has been, we, the treasurer has done a pretty amazing job in generating interest income and investment income in the general fund, 5.2 million in '25. We were expecting probably more rate cuts than happened, so we were projecting a little bit lower when we made the presentations to you of 3.7 in fiscal '26. Fiscal '27, in consultation with the treasurer and where our current investments are generating interest currently in our standard accounts that a lot of the money is held in, we're earning anywhere between 3.65 and 4.07%. And all of the money that's held with Morgan Stanley is generating anywhere between 4.25 and 4.5% in interest. So we feel comfortable that those will hold. Especially what's invested with Morgan Stanley because it is invested farther out into the fiscal year. We are projecting $27.9 million in local estimated receipts. Again, this will continue to change, not only as we go through the tax rate setting process for '26, but as we continue to review the receipts on a monthly basis in fiscal '26 as well. Next slide, please, Erica. So for a full, fulsome picture of fiscal '27 projection from the first slide, we're projecting 134.6 million in being raised in real and personal property taxes. We're projecting an allowance for abatements and exemptions of 275,000, which is a reduction to the amount that is raised and available to spend and allocate throughout the budget process. Local receipts, including the miscellaneous indirect costs, which is bills to, bill backs to the enterprise funds, 28.5 million. And we are projecting at this point because we are four months ahead of when the state starts their revenue process, that state aid will be the starting basis, will be the $5.3 million that we are receiving in state aid this year. So bringing a total for allocation of revenue of $168.27 million. Next slide, please, Erica. Again, very preliminary expenditures. Budget instructions will be going out in early September with budgets due back in late September. So the starting point for town salaries and school salaries is just the rollover of any unfilled budgeted positions as well as the rollover of all current status of contracts. As we know, we will be heading into negotiation. But the starting point for these discussions and the budget discussions, the projection for the town is 31.9 million and for the school salaries of 36.013 million. The other ones that we would highlight in this discussion and presentation is medical insurance. Consultation with NFP, our insurance consultants, they are seeing medical rate infla trend go up a little bit. We have been very lucky and fortunate since fiscal '24 that our rates have performed, or our our census has performed better than the medical rate inflation. We are projecting 12.5%. I do want to remind everybody that we're in August and we only have essentially 10 days of real actual claims for fiscal '26 since the majority of claims paid in the first 30 to 40 days are all run out claims from the prior year. Debt service of 16.1 is highlighted. I don't anticipate any additional debt being issued in terms of general obligation bonds. We have made a slight increase in allocation for interest income on the bands that we just issued. But other than that, it is just noted, but we don't expect any major changes. Prelimarily, general fund operating budget of 138.3 million as we begin the budgetary process. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. Preliminary expenditures, including articles, special fund transfers, which includes the county at 246,000. We have highlighted Health and Human Services in the amount of 650,000. I did meet with CRC and it's my understanding that the CRC and Council for Human Services will likely be submitting to the town manager and the select board a request for consideration of a potential increase in that allocation so that we did want to just highlight to the board that that may be coming. Town and school minimum capital, which is another big one, a way we finance a lot of our capital as well, 1.5 million. Then the enterprise fund transfers, 5.6 million to Ireland Home. Solid waste, 12.1 million and then total transfer to Stormwater, 538,000. Total appropriations from, through various other articles, 28.8 million. The offset to the state cherry sheet in terms of revenue is the cherry sheet expenditures and so our prime expenditure offset for the cherry sheet to the state is for the NRTA. There are some other very small offsets related to school funding. Total projected is consistent with what we are receiving this year and sending back to the state of 1.3 million. Projecting a total preliminary, again, April or August 20th, please don't get too nervous at this point about this, but 168.5 million. When paired with the revenue of 168.2 million, projection would leave us currently with a an X, we'd be in over, over the levy limit by $296,000. Next slide. So right before I turn this over to the town manager, I did just want to make one note to the board in the presentation. Behind this slide is the five-year average for revenue and expenditures. We also created a, an additional slide which shows the fiscal '26 debt service payments and the projections for '27 through '31 categorized by building, roads, infrastructure, as well as inside and, inside the levy limit, what the debt exclusions are and administrative fee and short-term interest for Clean Water Trust loans in total, which does reconcile out to our amortization schedule. And with that, I will turn this slide back over to the town manager.
Thank you very much, Brian. So usually we review what is yet to be determined and some of this will come to fruition, some might not, but we want to bring to your attention the types of things that we need to keep an eye on and work in or not to our budget process. Select board priorities, the strategic plan, rate, rate. We don't have a specific date completely firmed up just yet with your strategic plan annual retreat. We will be, now that we, one of the contracts you signed tonight was with Raptellis, the group that is going to be organizing the facilitated retreat. And there may be new priorities that emerge out of the strategic plan, yet to be determined. Town admin has some administrative priorities, including solid waste planning and implementation, which, which really, some of these are also select board priorities, but they're things we are very actively working on. The transition with the Waste Services Agreement for the solid waste facility is very actively underway. There may be some financial implications to that as we move forward, although quite a bit of that was addressed in the fiscal '26 budget and at the most recent town meeting. Facilities and property management. We have a lot of remote buildings. Many of them are getting into disrepair. We do not have enough facility staff. It's very difficult to recruit and retain people who have strong levels of facility management experience and we're doing our best, but we are really struggling with facilities. So that may be an area that we need to invest more money in. Workforce retention and succession strategy, strategies, same kind of thing. We've been doing this. I think we've had quite a bit of success since we have been majorly focusing on this and we want to keep at it. Infrastructure and capital projects, that kind of continues into the next item with competing capital priorities and you're going to be hearing about fiscal '27 capital projects at one of your meetings in September, I think it might be the 10th. Either the 10th or the 17th, but prior to us proceeding to the capital program committee with the departmental fiscal '27 capital items, we want to make sure the board is going to endorse those items that we are putting forward. Stormwater remains a high level issue. I have stormwater regulations on my desk somewhere and we need to get that to the board. That will involve fees and more of a permitting process. Competing pack capital priorities I mentioned, it, the competing capital priorities are large items that are all in the same sort of time range. So we need to make some decisions on how we're going to proceed with those. Continued review of collective bargaining agreement and non-union compensation impact. We are about to start collective bargaining with several unions whose contracts expire on June 30th, 2026. We've had a lot of administrative input already on that and going to executive session with the board very shortly. And we need to keep our, our non-union group at competitive levels as well. Citizen warrant articles, obviously we haven't, you haven't even endorsed the timeline just yet. You will be doing that on September 10th for the 2026 annual town meeting. We never budget for citizen warrant articles that involve funds, requests for funds, or warrant articles that might actually cost some money. So I know that's been an issue for some finance committee members and some finance committee discussions from time to time, but it is traditionally not something worked into the budget at the outset. We don't know yet about school priorities. We've heard about some so far, but those, those are most definitely going to be in the development stage very shortly. Free cash, Brian assures me that we'll be submitting our free cash for certification to the Department of Revenue in October and that will be a very helpful number to have early on. Local receipts, we're keeping an eye on for the first quarter of fiscal '26, which of course we won't know until the end of September. Health insurance, I think you mentioned health insurance, Brian, but we need our insurance consultant to keep an eye on the claims and the experience and all of those things to go into the development of the insurance numbers. Local aid, this is a state issue. This, this number will come from the state. I think we've been doing pretty well. There haven't been any local aid cuts lately, so we're hoping that that will remain at least level. We're always keep, trying to keep an eye on any regional transit authority service changes. Hopefully the free rides will continue and we won't have to pay for that. So fingers crossed that that keeps going, but there's, there certainly are service changes that I think the regional transit authority administrators looking at. PFAS, of course, that remains a very high level issue. That is going to be ultimately another very costly item if we are going to need to be treating drinking water either in private wells or in our public water supply for PFAS removal. And we are actively looking at some innovative ways to remove PFAS that are probably sort of still in the development stages with the firms that are working on them. This is obviously not just Nantucket, it's, you know, worldwide. And potential fee adjustments. Fee adjustments are most likely not going to bring in gigantic amounts of revenue, but we are taking seriously select board member fees. Very routine reminder that we should be increasing the fees that we can increase by the cost of living annually rather than big jumps from time to time. So we are bringing a presentation to you on this. I think we have that on for September 10th as well. So that's just a bit of an overview of the items that are still outstanding that we need to keep an eye on as we move more into the budget process. And we are happy to answer any questions. I think that was it, right, Brian?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Any questions from anyone?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Brian, are you concerned at all about the changes in the federal government and state aid and trickling, you know, coming to us and all that in the future?
I don't think I'm necessarily as concerned with state aid in terms of an impact because I don't think there's a lot of federal dollars in the state aid that we get on the cherry sheet. I think that the potential impact is probably more likely to be realized at the school. I think they get a lot more of various title grants and things and I think maybe influxes, they continue to reshape the Department of Education and how that all will ultimately play out, but for me, I think on a pure basis of what we get on the cherry sheet, I think there's less, a less of a concern. I think it's more with those types of grants and things that I think the school gets more of than, than we do. Obviously, some of the stuff that we do receive such as, excuse me, some state revolving fund money for sewer projects or drinking water projects does have a federal component to it. So I think that there is a I don't think it's been finalized or completely understood what that impact is going to be, but I do think that the state revolving fund may have less to distribute as we work through this process. So there are some concerns, but I think that as we go through this, that we'll have a better understanding through the, with our conversations with the school.
Okay, if on the just on process, on the school budget, I'm assuming you work with the superintendent superintendent works with you on that. Can you just talk a little bit about how their process goes in the most general sense?
To be honest with you, that's probably very similar to our process. The 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 print, the school, the staff, the principals meet with their staff, compile the requests. And each principal for all of the schools presents that to administration, and they go through. They do meet with us at least once. We have numerous other interactions, myself and Martin, the CFO at the school, on what their needs or priorities are. And we try to find a way to fit that into the overall arching budget, which is is not always easy. We've been able to accomplish a lot of what they've asked for over the years, but every year is different, obviously. So but I know their process getting to us is not very dramatically different than the same process that we undertake on the town side.
I see, thank you.
Anyone else?
Matt.
Brooke, yes, go.
I just it's more of a comment. I appreciate the fact that note is being taken about a potential for increase in the human services budget. The needs are growing on the island, and the resources coming from the federal government are in steep decline. And so I just want to make sure that the the community is taken care of in the way we all, I think, believe that we want to have happen, and it's been level funded for a while. So I appreciate an openness to that conversation and look forward to the CRC and CH's recommendations based on the needs assessment that they're about to undertake.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next is the monthly town management report. I do I do want to just quickly mention in response to Mr. Dixon's comment or question about the school. We do work very closely with the school to develop the budget, and I think we are really quite lucky to have as good of a relationship as we do with the school administration. Many towns do not, especially regional school districts that have multiple towns in them, and they are always fighting about who has to give what and who gets what and all of that. So we're we're pretty fortunate the way our system works. Okay, so the monthly town manager report. We have a we're unveiling this new format. It's much less like a list of items that looks sort of boring and more still a list, but in this PowerPoint format. And hopefully, it'll be a lot more interesting. So it's categorized, and this is the governing and strategic planning slide. So we have had two FinCom orientation sessions recently. We we had this is kind of a new launch for new FinCom members, and I I think they appreciated it. And in fact, I I know they did because the current member asked to have another one, which is great. So we we did that. We hope to continue that in the future. As I mentioned a little bit ago, we have now executed a contract with our strategic plan consultant, and they will also be available for town administration support services throughout the year as needed. And that involved the issuance of an RFP to which there were three respondents. One wasn't really what we were looking for at all. And the other, we interviewed both. The chair was part of the interviews and ended up picking Raftellus, who we have been using for the past several years. I noted that we're working on the twenty twenty six annual town meeting timeline. That will be before you on September tenth. We we still have the twenty twenty five special town meeting timeline kind of hanging out there. But at this point, I don't think we're looking at a November special anymore, and hopefully, we're looking only at an annual. I I if there were to be another special in between, say, November and the annual, that that is going to be a real lift to launch something like that. Fiscal twenty seven capital projects, I mentioned, we're preparing an update for you on the tenth. Fiscal twenty seven budget prep is underway, and the fiscal twenty five annual town report prep, Erica is our preparer of that. And we're trying to really crack the whip on getting those reports in sooner rather than later because it's a big effort to put that town report together. Next, please. Meetings and intergovernmental relations, we obviously have a lot of meetings, and these are these are just meant to be highlights. We had a midseason beach meet. We have a we have a pre, a mid, and a postseason and postseason beach meetings with all of the town agencies that have anything to do with beaches. And we also include the Nan Tucket Conservation Foundation, the trustees, the land bank. I guess I guess that's it. And we there were no there were no reports of anything overly unusual. There, of course, are the usual unpleasant things like leftover bonfires and leftover trash and things of that nature. So we just hope that people will be a lot more mindful about those things. But I think the groups all work together very well and keep in touch with with each other about beach issues. The deputies and I went over to the vineyard in July to have our annual meeting with the vineyard managers, and that is always super interesting. And we learn a lot from each other. Next, please. Labor relations and workforce development. So as I mentioned earlier, we are preparing for collective bargaining negotiations with over five of our unions. And that is really actively starting. We launched an internship program this year. We we've had interns sort of here and there throughout throughout the years. But this this is a more formalized internship program, and we fund we we had some funding in our fiscal twenty six budget, I guess, I guess it is, that's kind of a pool of funds that is kept with HR. And the departments apply for interns, and and this is the first year we've done it. So it was a little not totally organized at the beginning, but but it's getting there. And the departments who had interns really, they want to keep them forever, and they really did do a lot of work. And we had a presentation by them at a cabinet meeting a few weeks ago, and they they really did a lot of valuable work for us. So we're looking forward to keeping the program going. It's valuable for the town, it's valuable for them, and hopefully, we'll get some future town employees and maybe department heads out of it. HR and town admin are working on our classification and compensation update for non union, the the non union group, although we also reference it in our union negotiations. We've managed to hopefully fill our committee operations coordinator position and are now working towards filling our records access officer position. We've transitioned the Island Home Administrator from former administrator Peter Holden, who was actually engaged through the firm Eisenstein Flaherty Associates. And Bob Eisenstein has retired from that firm and is now at the Island Home being our administrator. It was really time to get someone who's been through a number of nursing home transition types of experiences. And we may be going through that with our Island Home, who knows, in the mid to mid future. Next, please. Coastal and environmental initiatives. We are obviously continuing to work on Baxter Road Alternative Access. I was advised earlier in the week that sometime soon I will be asked to sign the notice of intent to go to the Conservation Commission for that. And to to remind you, this is the town project that will establish alternative access for the endangered homes on Baxter Road. This this is intended to be funded ultimately through Betterment assessments, and that has yet to be worked out. But we are working on all of the background that needs to go into the Betterment Assessment Process, including appraisals and determining whether or not we will be getting voluntary easements. Wisconsin Beach Preservation Fund, we've had several meetings with them to reach a memorandum of understanding for the GO2 project and what it will take to for the town to issue a license, including a town meeting vote and use of the property for the expanded project. Select board member fee has been our liaison on that. We have a lot of coastal resiliency projects going on, and they involve all these things listed here. Coordination, planning, outreach, impacts on other municipal projects. We're finding that there are impacts all over the place. We start like the Harbor Master Harbor Master Building Project, for example, which you're going to hear about in September, has coastal resiliency touches many aspects of that project and other other associated projects. Everything sort of touches something else. Ongoing PFOS activities, Vineyard Winds, we've done a lot of follow up with the town concerns. Obviously, we are still in a drought, and I was very lucky enough to have Natural Resources take me over to Meskegette a couple of weeks ago. They go over there once or twice a month to make sure the bird endangered the bird fencing for endangered species is up and hasn't been ripped down. It was super interesting, and I'm was so they did such a great job explaining everything that gets done over there. It was really, it was really neat. Next, please. Facilities, infrastructure, infrastructure and public spaces. As I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of buildings to take care of. We do not have a lot of centralized municipal space. Sixteen Broad and Twenty South Water Street are in desperate need of improvement. This is a view of the staircase going upstairs to the second floor in the town building. That is the tip of the iceberg as to what the interior of this building looks like. We have a lot of upgrades that need to be done, including probably code work. And we are getting the evaluation of that work assessed currently. We are exploring the potential use of office trailers because the work that we need to do will probably necessitate a move of employees elsewhere for a period of time. Lots of logistics involved in that have not even begun to figure that out yet, but it's starting to get into our minds. We have a public restroom improvement project out for bid right now, and that is almost all of the, I think, all of our public restrooms will undergo some level of improvement. The solid waste contract contract I mentioned already, wait, drive, Amelia Tacoma traffic and parking plan, that is underway. We've been talking to the transportation planner about getting public input on this. Again, we have had public input in the past, for example, on Amelia, whether or not Amelia Drive should be two way, one way, which way? And it's going to be coming to you, hopefully, sort of shortly in a recommendation type of manner. We are working on responding to encroachments. There are a lot of encroachments out there, the interns, one of the groups of interns worked on on this and gave us a little presentation recently. And they they unfortunately are going to be leaving or have left. And the real estate staff is going to be coming into the board to give a little overview and reminder of our encroachment policy. It's it's a bit out of control out there with encroachments. Same with downtown street and sidewalk conflicts. I may have mentioned this at a prior meeting, but we are going to be working on developing a policy for the board to formally adopt on on these types of things, which include a lot of things ranging from sidewalk signage to bench consistency to whether or not art is allowed on public property. Certain things that people keep trying to sell from town property, which are never been allowed, but they keep trying to sell things like lemonade at the town building lawn, which I don't know why that's become a thing this year, but they need to be moved on. And a a lot of other things like that. It's it's kind of gotten a bit a bit out of control out there again with street stuff, we've been calling it. The movie shoot dates, we just had some discussion about that was an extensive amount of staff time to go through all of that. Next. Plans, assessments, and projects. So we have under review now the master plan, the harbors plan, a concessions assessment, the Eelgrass Management Plan. I didn't list that here, but that is through Natural Resources, and that's coming to the board on the tenth. We have an upcoming facilitated joint meeting with the Select Board Affordable Housing Trust and Planning Board. This is so that all of these boards can get together and get on the same page with housing planning. We're reevaluating the DPW facility project. Hopefully, we will report out later in the fall on where we think that project might be able to go. Sort of the same thing with the Island Home, we're working on a community survey, a smaller facility, what the closure steps will look like and what the potential cost is there. Rental car issues, this is this is the Turo issue and not just Turo, but people just sort of randomly renting their car out without the the medallion. And we do have some car rental agencies that are asking for meetings with the board and with staff to figure this out. As the board will recall, we've tried to figure it out at two town meetings. The articles that both of those did not pass and or were tabled. So it's something that we're continuing to try to figure out how to address. The Surfside Area Roads Transportation Enhancement Project, we had a public informational session last week. Erica and Drew, the DPW director, and some other staff were there. And I I think most of the attendees, most of the attendees were nearby residents, and there were there were a lot of concerns about traffic calming. As we all know, when there's a newly paved road that's on a straightaway, tends to get to be a speedway. So we were hearing about what the measures are to try to address that, but speeding is a problem everywhere. Next, please. We are continuing continuing under the technology category to examine the use of artificial intelligence, AI for minute taking and are evaluating some a couple of pilot programs and emerging software applications. We it it it's sort of we land on something, and then we hear about something else that somebody someone's starting to use. And it it's like it is more intriguing than the prior one. So we're we're continuing to work on that. Cybersecurity training, I think we all just recently got had some training as part of our ongoing cybersecurity training program. And I urge all employees who this is for and all boards, committees, and commissions who have town emails, you've got to take the training. And if you don't, over a period of time, you are going to lose access to your email until you get the training done. Next. Okay, public safety and emergency management. We are transitioning emergency management from the police department to the fire department. And the deputy chief of Mosey is, I think the fire chief mentioned this in his recent monthly departmental report. He has emergency management experience from his former employment. And we're working on on a lot more internal or some additional internal training and tabletop exercises and things like that. And they're keeping a close eye on the upcoming storm. Next. Oh, that's it, and happy to answer any questions. And see what you thought about our new format.
I like the pictures.
I thought the pictures would be helpful.
Yeah, it kept my attention, Libby, honestly.
Okay, good, 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 good. Pictures will keep them.
Anyone else?
I I do admit to using a little AI to prepare that presentation. And let me tell you, it was very, very helpful.
I liked it, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we are moving on. Select any committee reports, anyone have anything?
Matt?
Yes.
I just wanted to reiterate the 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 value of the intern program. The housing and real estate office had three interns this summer, and we were given a presentation at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund meeting this week. And the amount of work that the three of them accomplished really being able to dig into the wish list of projects that have been sort of on the trust radar and staff's radar for quite some time was really impressive, and they moved some really interesting projects forward, including monitoring and preparing input on any bills at the State House related to housing, affordable housing that we might want to weigh in on. And so just that alone, I can't even remember the other projects, but it was really impressive. That's it.
No, that's great. Yes.
Just on Board of Health, this tomorrow, actually, at four, the Board of Health meeting, there's a lot, as as Libby talked about for a second, we there's lots of PFOS stuff, and there's regular updates. Malcolm, you were very accustomed to seeing these at the at the meetings, but regular updates from the Health Department and Andrew Shapiro, the Environmental Contamination Administrator for the town on what's going on, and there's beach water sampling, et cetera. There's also in short term rental enforcement discussion and rental inspection discussion on tomorrow, which should be interesting for anybody who's interested in that.
That's great. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All right, Tom?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Brooke?
Hi.
Don?
Hi, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night, everybody.